Morning, we started the August thirteen board of directors committee session. And let's start with the role recall.
Yes, Director Brad Echols. Vice Secretary Robert Ooten. Secretary Arthur Perry. Vice President Arlene Schaefer. President Mike Schaefer. Thank you.
Absolute new to illness.
Yes.
Other comments? Probably unless we have anybody online, it's nobody online, let's go to uh I will see.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh this for the received file co enforcement officer report for July twenty twenty four. Uh Officer um David Griffin is is out uh today. So uh if you have any questions, uh please uh relay those questions to me and I'll ask David uh when he returns and I can provide a response to my weekly update. Yes, I'm gonna turn this over to Caitlin Trannan, my manager.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. Before you is the retroactive budget adjustment both fiscal years two thousand twenty three, twenty four. Um the board of directors approved the biannual budget fiscal years two thousand twenty three, twenty four. And two thousand twenty four, twenty five on June twenty six, two thousand twenty three. The factor combo sewer cleaning unit was budgeted for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five. The estimated cost of the truck was five hundred thousand dollar at the time of the budget process. The board, the board approved four hundred thousand to be transferred from the wastewater fixed asset replacement fund. To the capital outweigh wastewater fund with the remaining one hundred thousand from the wastewater fund balance. Because it takes ten to twelve months to manufacture and deliver the unit on August twenty first, two thousand twenty three. The board approved to submit the purchase order at that time, the price of the unit went up to six hundred forty thousand dollar. The board approved an additional a hundred forty thousand to be transferred from from the fixed asset replacement fund. To the capital outweigh wastewater fund, a total of fo- five hundred forty thousand came from fixed asset replacement fund. And a hundred thousand from the wastewater uh fund balance. The district received the unit earlier than uh anticipated. Because the district received and paid for the unit um in June of this year. The expense must be recorded in fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four. The um a retroactive adjustment to the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four is required. Due to the timing of the event. Staff has reviewed uh the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four wastewater through the minor year end. Budget and projected there will be a savings of two hundred ninety nine thousand from personnel. And four hundred and uh twenty six thousand from maintenance and operation. A total of uh seven hundred and twenty five thousand unspent budget in the wastewater fund. Staff is proposing the board of directors to approve the retroactive budget adjustment. To transfer two hundred forty thousand from the wastewater personnel. As well as four hundred thousand from the wastewater emineral. To the wastewater capital outweigh account to cover for the purchase of the uh combo sewer cleaning unit. After the retroactive budget adjustment. The fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four wastewater fund is projected to have a remaining unspent budget balance of eighty five thousand. That concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions you need help.
How comfortable are we in in noting that the truck? I know what body shop costs and what part costs have done over the last eighteen months have really jumped. Uh are we comfortable that this will be the final amount on the truck or? Is there any way we're gonna get dinged again?
We were we've already paid for the truck, so. Yeah, no, we do, that's why, that's why we have to, we were anticipated, we were, it was a mistake, I'm lying, we should have held off on the truck until it was delivered in July, but we've got it, we received it early. In in last fiscal year, so that's why we have to do um adjustments uh to the bookkeeping, just basically what we're doing. Yes, it's it's in operation right now, yes.
So I just want to be clear, so under the projections. We we would be at about a seven hundred and change unspent. With this adjustment, I think you said eighty would be the, again, projected, say, our unspent revenue for.
Yes.
Okay, and then um what does this do then to uh the? Twenty four, twenty five, twenty, but the next budget cycle that it was in.
So uh that's a good question, because that will flow into my next report.
See, I like to tease and and ask, you know, no, I I I figured it was so, I but I was, I just wanted to make sure. And then uh. I mean, there is no alternative, right? It is what it is, we have to, we, it's just a line item budgeting, accounting, practice. Because of the dollars amounts, it's gotta come back to us.
Yeah, and because I I need to um, it's for transparency that we received the truck. But the budget was in next fiscal year, so.
Yeah, okay. This will be a line in um form meeting for.
I'm actually requesting for.
Request a rule today.
Okay. Second discussion of. Oh, sorry, uh all in favor, I oppose. Motion carries four and zero. Make that adjust. Thank you. Um so I didn't go to either team. But you did, right?
Yes. In front of you is the proposed budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five. Again, the board of directors approved again biannual budget uh fiscal years two thousand twenty three, twenty four. And two thousand twenty four, twenty five, on June twenty sixth, um two thousand twenty thirty.
I will tell for you.
There have been several developments since the board adopted the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget, requiring budget adjustments for the fiscal year. So what's new? Um first, we look at revenue. On June twenty four, two thousand twenty four, the board approved the solid waste rate study. That increased the annual solid waste collection charges. As a result, uh the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five annual revenue budget will increase approximately nine. Hundred three thousand two hundred. The district also received the second uh S B thirteen eighty three grant funding. For uh of three hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred. Staff is planning to spend the grant on the item listed there. Um between July first of this year through April first, two thousand twenty six. Now we'll look at um expenditure. There were changes in personnel. Um we all know cost of living adjustment came in one point six percent less than budgeted. We had changes in staffing. When a new incumbent is hired, salary and benefits may be more or less than the former employee uh affecting the adopted. Personnel budget. And then also um in June, the board of directors approved the classification and compensation study. As a result, uh we needed, we we need an additional twenty one thousand in the solid waste fund. And an additional twenty nine thousand nine hundred in the wastewater fund. So how does the district plan to fund these additional costs? In the solid waste fund, the adopted budget part-time salary account has a budget of thirty one thousand dollar. For the part-time county clerk and the internship position. The internship position will only perform functions related to S B thirteen eighty three. As I mentioned earlier, the district received uh three hundred fifteen thousand three hundred grant funding. Staff is allocating fifty thousand three hundred from the grant to pay for the internship position. So therefore, the part-time accounting, the part, the part-time salary account. Has an available twenty one thousand for the additional cost for the class income study. So the total proposed solid waste fund salaries and benefits increase fifty thousand three hundred as shown in the charge there. In in blue. Next slide please. Wastewater fund. The adopted budget for the annual sewer maintenance account is one hundred twenty uh one hundred fifty five thousand. Of this amount, thirty five thousand um is for manual rings and covers. Um one hundred and twenty thousand for miscellaneous items and events that may occur during the fiscal year. The staff is recommending transferring twenty nine thousand nine hundred from the annual sewer maintenance account. To cover for the additional costs from the class income study. The proposed wastewater fund salaries and benefits. Increase twenty nine thousand nine hundred as shown there. So far, any questions?
Okay, let's go exactly, yeah. Grant funding. You have listed here uh.
Yes.
When we're set it.
It's a um a public storage off the here Newport, uh here in Costa Mesa, off on Newport Boulevard. A big, big warehouse. Yeah. We didn't have enough room in the yard to store it, so we had to put it somewhere.
Um remind me again who the thirteen eighty three grant was from?
Cow recycle, cow recycle.
That was Cow Recycles that did that, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Questions for Caitlin then? Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one. So we. We have one unfilled position. I mean, what what is that position?
The wastewater maintenance manager. Which we're currently in improvement. Yes, we just, we just reviewed the applications, we're we're scheduling interviews right now.
Okay, are you doing that internally?
Uh the review, the the recruitment, yes, we did all that internal improvement, yes.
I mean, you recruited from our own staff.
No, no, not not for the wastewater maintenance super, we, I mean, we didn't hire our consultant to help recruitment, but uh our, my staff. Diana Tenisha did that, um the recruitment, uh we we don't have any internal candidates that are that are eligible for that position. No, no, we we did promote to to uh wastewater maintenance order to supervisor positions. But this is a, we, I'm looking for someone to be more of a a a this, that has a lot of experience in wastewater and could be a good coach and mentor my new supervisor, so that's why I'm looking for someone like that.
How how far along?
Again, we're 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 uh just reviewed the applications, uh uh Tenisha is putting together outside panel. Um then they're probably to turn up a couple other interviews, so we're still looking about a couple months away until until someone's on board.
Slide please. On May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, the board of directors approved a cost of living adjustment for C R N R that was one point nine percent. Less than what was budgeted. Also, in October, uh there will be a new rate structure due to the three card system. Staff is proposing. Uh a budget adjustment for the trash holler, the recycling. The landfill and the organic disposal accounts as shown on the screen there. Now we're looking at professional services account. Staff is adding seventy thousand for S B thirteen eighty three record keeping system and consulting services. This will be covered by the grant funding. An additional thirty five thousand for permit and fixture free study. Thirty thousand to conduct a study for emergency battery storage for the solar system H Q. Any questions here in this account? Yes. Um now we'll look at the um engineering plan sheet uh account. On May twenty three, two thousand twenty three, the board of directors approved rates increases for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five. For R V H firm for engineering inspection and contract administrative services. Effective July first of this year, there was an increase of four dollar and two cents per hour. For the inspector rate due to an increase in the previous wage. The inspector in rate increased from a hundred sixteen uh dollar fifty cents an hour. To a hundred and twenty three dollars and fifty two cents an hour. Based on the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four expenses, staff estimated the the uh this fiscal year expenses shown there. In the table, um there are no, I'm sorry, next slide please. In that table there, there are no additional budget requests. The total budget for these four accounts is one hundred ninety thousand. Staff is proposing to adjust the budget within these four accounts. Any questions here? Other new projects and items uh proposing are to increase building maintenance uh by. Building maintenance budget by twenty three thousand. Add earth earthquake insurance for H Q and district yard buildings for twenty two thousand five hundred. To replace H Q roof patch safety for safety compliance for seven thousand. And H Q painting project for a hundred fifteen thousand. That's, oh, I'm sorry, uh go back. Uh since the new combo truck was received and spent in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, which the board just approved. Staff is proposing to cancel the transfer from the wastewater fixed asset replacement fund. Total of five hundred and forty thousand. Um and use the one hundred thousand from the wastewater fund balance for these new items.
Well, on that. Number nine for the earthquake insurance, you get that through S C R M A. Into the separate policy, it's not even included in our.
Separate policy. Yep. It it is a separate policy.
No, I. Generally, and maybe this is a little off topic, when you get earthquake insurance in your home, it's a separate policy.
Right.
But most companies include an option on your property and liability policy for earthquake, obviously. I should know a little more about S C R M A, maybe, but ob- obviously that's done as a separate. It's not through the calendar, it's for regular care.
Yes, correct, I um so just inquired from Mr. Hey, do we have earthquake insurance and long ago, we didn't. And this is, they told us this is where we have to go to get the insurance.
Understand, it's just gymnastics sometimes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's that's. I I I'd have to go back to them, it's of the other, our underwriter, it's uh. It it's, I'm all, whether it's included or not, we're still going to spend twenty two thousand dollars. That's gonna be, the amounts, yeah, well, reasonable. Hard, hard question, but I just.
That's for two buildings too, keep in mind, that's for this and the yard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So overall, the solid waste fund, the proposed budget adjustments for the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget. Reflects a balanced budget of eight million uh two hundred and forty seven thousand one hundred. Okay, now wastewater fund, this is the list of the additional products and items uh we I presented. Totalling two hundred thirty thousand two hundred. So how does the district plan to fund these additional costs? Um I kind of touched base a little bit earlier, um to propose. I I'm proposing to use a hundred thousand from wastewater fund bounds. From the cancellation of the um uh combo truck unit. And the remaining one hundred thirty thousand two hundred to transfer in from the general fund.
I, that confused me and when I was reading the report, it kind of confused me, because. Like the board would be shifted that expenditure back to this current fiscal year or last fiscal year's budget. And now I'm not understanding the numbers, can you just walk me through these again, if you were, you said a hundred and. Well, there were five forty and then you talked about a hundred and then you threw, just threw out another number, so I'm I'm confused.
Okay, so um the truck was budget this fiscal year, two thousand twenty four, twenty five.
Right.
But we s- received last fiscal year. So we have to expense and record that in last fiscal year. So where's the budget for last fiscal year, how are we gonna support that expense? So seven hundred twenty five thousand savings on unspent budget from last fiscal year. So I use that unspent budget from last fiscal year to cover for that truck, uh six hundred forty thousand. So that's covered, so the budget this year, six hundred forty thousand. I have to, I'm requesting to cancel that uh budget, that transfer in this fiscal year, twenty four, twenty five. So the total budget for that truck, six hundred forty thousand. Five hundred and forty thousand came from fixed asset replacement fund. Transfer from fixed asset replacement fund to the wastewater fund, so I'm saying I want to cancel that.
In in my um language terms, basically, we're reducing the expenditure by six hundred something thousand dollars.
Yes, and then we're adding these here.
Right, yeah, so that's how we're paying for these items is reduced, so. But we've increased the expenses elsewhere, which you've already covered, and so we're. I'm catching up.
No, no, I I it's it's a lot of information and it's it's a lot of numbers, um so I'm glad you asked.
Thanks, if if you think he's dumb. So, so that money, because it wasn't spent last year. It's carried into this year to use for these, did I miss that?
Yeah, she's really.
You're playing trick with me.
I wouldn't, I'm not smarter than poetry.
So so last fiscal year is it's already expensed and we use unspent budget last fiscal year for the truck, so that's done. So the budget that we approved um six hundred forty thousand in this fiscal year. Five hundred and forty came from fixed asset replacement fund. So that's five hundred and forty, but the truck is six hundred forty, so that one hundred thousand, we, when through the budget process, we, we took it out from fund balance. So that one hundred thousand is available to spend. And that's where I'm applying it to this.
To this year.
To this year for these additional items there.
Okay.
Well, the annual general funds uh comes from that one percent. Property tax, and then it came in more than we had budgeted.
Right.
And that's for this hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right, so you're, you're ahead of me one slide. And.
And ju- just uh to, sorry, go back unless it's your next, next slide, but uh. The four fifty five and the re- the other non-operating revenue, that was the combination grants. And the incre- can you just remind me of that one?
Four fifty five.
It was uh, yeah, other non-operating revenue.
Oh, okay.
I just, I want to keep my, which goes to where correct.
That one, um. I know three hundred so the grants, when we receive that, that's gonna apply to that line non-operating.
That's what I thought, but then the numbers I don't think were matching for me.
That's total for solid waste and wastewater. Um if you can pull up a touch in a, or I guess go go back to the the second slide. That one, yes, so you're referring to that, right, the the line, the last line in blue?
Uh yes, four fifty five, three hundred, yeah.
So that's the total proposed budget, adjust budget for solid waste and wastewater.
And so increased in, it's.
So.
Increased by three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from what we initially proposed revenue wise. Just revenue, and that's made up of the grant and the uh rate change.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So you see, you look at the last column variance there, nine hundred and three thousand two hundred, and then. The last line in blue, three hundred fifteen, three hundred.
Yeah. Okay. I got it, thank you.
What you're on is uh income. Um the fees we get from C R and our uh like our. When they mess up fees.
Oh, liquidated, which is, yes.
Liquidated. Where does it show in appearance? It's obviously only solid waste, we line item that amount.
It's it's just put in fund balance, right, it just put in fund balance, it's in fund balance.
Just put right into fund balance.
Yeah.
And and we haven't received that, you know?
No, yes, we did, we did, we did receive it.
I did not incorporate that number in there, but it's when we record it goes to fund balance. And let's, let's say we need to do more in um solid ways. Uh then we'll go back to the board and ask the board to appropriate money from that amount to spend. Cause that's a revenue source.
Fund balance is both solid waste and wastewater, is it just?
But they have separate fund balances.
We we we.
We do have, I realize that. Um I guess what I'm getting to is, do we need to show that as a separate amount? Or is there some sensitivities there that we don't want to show that? Why do we, why do we just put it in fund balance and not identify it as a separate line item?
If I put it in here, it will add it to that line non, uh other non-operating revenue under solid waste. And then it will increase that three hundred fifteen, three hundred, this number will increase. Yeah, and then at the end, it's not a balanced budget, because we have additional revenue. Um then I will put that into contingency account, then that's just an account.
So putting it in the fund balance means your job.
Yeah.
About eighty percent easier than I had, right?
I just found you strong and it's.
We listed them, I I just, I, I mean, I might be smart, just list it some way, but it's a income. Let's give that some thought, I I I don't make it.
Well, why don't we discuss that during the the budget process next year?
That's, that's fine, that's completely fine, I just, for me, it's. Something the public should know about.
Okay.
And yeah, just as we go into next budget process, let's.
Okay.
Let's consider.
Sure, absolutely.
Subline.
Yes, yes.
See if you can get back to your.
Seventeen, slide seventeen. Okay, here, general fund. So a little background on the general fund, the district created the general fund to account for financial resources. Of general government. These unrestricted resources consist mainly of property taxes and investment earnings. Property taxes are strict unrestricted revenues, which have previously recorded uh in the solid waste fund. As rate stabilization. Also, in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, the district donated fifty thousand dollar to the city of Costa Mesa. For the restaurants at the permanent bridge shelter. As of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, the general fund has an available unrestricted amount of three hundred. Twenty three thousand seven fifty four. Staff is proposing the board of directors to transfer a hundred thirty thousand two hundred from the general fund to the wastewater. Staff is proposing the board of directors to transfer a hundred and thirty thousand two hundred from the general fund to the wastewater fund. Next one, please. This table summarizes the budget, the total budget adjustments for fiscal year two thousand twenty four twenty five. As you can see, the solid waste and the wastewater funds are balanced. And we're using general fund balance to support the wastewater fund. Staff will bring this item back to the board uh meeting for approval. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to enter the floor.
Yeah, uh one, first one, the uh can you just tell me what the uh negative one third to two hundred number is on that revenue, what that represents?
So that's coming from the general fund. So I'm, so the general fund, the revenue, the very first line, we budget uh three hundred and fifty five thousand, revenue, property tax coming in. And if you go down kind of somewhere in the middle there, the negative uh. Sorry, go to the very, the the first column, that's the adopted budget, the adopted budget section. Yes, so revenue for general fund, we budget three hundred and fifty five. And if you go down kind of in the middle there, negative three hundred and fifty five, we're transferring it that the the whole amount, the revenue for property tax budget, transfer to solid waste, the next column right there. So from general fund revenue, we transfer to um solid waste, and that's how the board's been approving um to help stabilize rates for solid waste through the budget process. But from year to year, we always received a little bit more than three hundred and fifty five for the budget number. And so whatever the remaining balance actually is transferred, it remains in the general fund balance, fund balance. So now by June thirtieth, we have three hundred and twenty three thousand seven fifty four remain in the general fund. So I'm asking to use one hundred and thirty thousand two hundred from general fund to support, to transfer into the wastewater fund.
So is this using reserves to balance this?
The general fund.
The reserves to balance this budget?
Yes.
Okay, that uh that's what I thought.
But remember, we cancel the truck that we request five hundred and forty from uh we reduce spending this fiscal year by six hundred and forty for the truck that was.
Still the, we're still on the whole one hundred and thirty grand. We're short one hundred and thirty, so we have to get in reserves to balance this thing.
Didn't we increase reserve by six forty before we do that? We meant, we meant from the truck, six forty went into reserves? For the general fund, right?
That's from the fixed asset replacement fund.
Okay. So, okay. Uh I'm I'm not happy with that. I'd like to see kind of elsewhere, study using reserves.
It's to bring this back to the the board meeting.
Was that, well, I mean, that's one forward, right, is that what the full board believes wants us to do?
Not sure.
Yeah, I it it's generated a thought process from you a little bit, dude, so I'm I'm not sure.
Do we need this adopted today?
And she said they were gonna bring it to the board meeting for that.
I I would just ask maybe, I know if there's other options, you have them somewhere, maybe just present like an A B and C or an A and B, or you say this is all we can do out now, and then we can determine where to go, where to go.
And when you bring it to the board, you'd be able to, I'm not asking you to give this whole presentation again, can we just narrow it down to what we're doing here for the adjustment? That would be your report.
Yeah.
You can do that, that way, we're not spending a ton of time.
Yeah, I guess I I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around the, it's reserve, yes, but it's 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 general fund reserve, so so again, that's why we have the the reserves, and the beauty of the general fund is that it's it's, we can spend it on anything we want to, so it's there for that reason, in case we have to um you know, if we are expending something that's unforeseen and that reserve is there, and so we're showing some expenditures that were unforeseen, we need, we need to cover that, and that's what we have the fund balance for, that's what it's for.
I view there, I would, I view reserves as just what you said, unexpected, not for budget purposes. During the fiscal year, it's like, oh crud, we had a X Y Z problem, we need to use reserves for that.
Okay, yeah, like I.
Well, I think I think.
We can, we can come back with some cuts.
Yeah, the part of it is, is an explanation of where we are with the reserves. We we have, we have a policy for a certain amount of reserve.
That that is for the um um fund fifty um and solid wastewater, that's that's has to be a five million dollar reserve. However, this, we're talking about the general fund and the balance for that as of June thirtieth of this year is uh three hundred and twenty three thousand uh seven fifty four, and the board can use that money, and which the board's been using that fund to support solid waste, so either you're supporting solid waste or wastewater, it's up to you um.
Is the that total revenue, that three fifty five, that's our sales tax increment that we get every year. So we're constantly putting into that general fund for that amount. And we had more income in the last fiscal year than we did.
Yeah.
Previously, right?
Each each year, we've been receiving a little bit more, but because of our budgeting purposes, I don't wanna say, oh yeah, we're gonna get this next number that's a lot higher, so I'm a little bit more conservative when it comes to.
Conservative.
Budgeting.
Yeah, I know, I get it.
So now we have a balance of three hundred.
When you come back with that, at the board meeting, as part of this, can you give us a breakdown of the last five years? I won't believe.
Um no one can go back once. That's that's for the last five years.
So you can see the property taxes is stiffer going up, the second line item. Some three sixty six to four hundred and eighty seven thousand.
Okay, so that's going in. That's that's going in to keep the general fund or the reserve, or we want to call it, a little bit of flush. As we go up. So that helps, I think, from my thinking, kind of what you're talking about, but but I I get it.
Yeah, it helps, and at some point, we're gonna have another market correction, we just don't know when.
So we we can, we can, I I'm thinking, I'm talking about, we can come back with some cuts. Um uh I can't guarantee a whole hundred and thirty thousand, but but I I I have some on my head, we can, we can cut, we can cut back with some cuts.
You know, there's still, we're only getting like a hundred thousand. Now, what do we have to now, three hundred? What's it now?
For what, after all this question?
That's pretty good. Yeah, and 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 that's just a particular product, yeah, going up, which need a bad thing for, like, you know, when you're on problem thirteen, it's not a bad.
I I think what Mike said, maybe you have a couple of options, the option you're presenting, and then maybe the second option.
Sure.
I mean, and then we can decide.
Yeah, yeah. I would like the options where you come back and say, this is the preferred option, this option you can do, but you're done for doing it. Not saying.
Yeah, no, we've, we've got clear direction, we'll, we'll come back with some options for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about solar batteries.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, I'm gonna turn this over to Angela Clunver, she's gonna give this report for you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mrs. Chief and Board of Directors. Uh we're bringing this item back for final adoption by the board. Uh the proposed recommendations were presented during the July joint board and CDC meeting, where the CDC recommended the board to approve the program changes. I'm available to have any questions, if you want to go over um the report details.
Maybe, are you thinking that we're gonna get more schools involved?
Yes, so we, yeah, we historically invited about twenty six schools, and now we're gonna reach out to thirty three schools. Um I've already, this past month, I've been getting emails from schools to join. Um the assistant superintendent at N M U S D has shared the program with the principals of the district, and so they're already pretty eager to get started.
That's hot, cause we've never had Costa Mesa High fall, that's what, that would be a good start.
Yeah, they they've been invited, but they.
I know.
They don't participate.
Are we going into Newport Beach also?
There's new schools in Newport Beach uh within our service area.
Yeah, cause that's in Newport, they, I don't buy that's for Newport's part of the service areas.
I don't know if I'm here, but there are a couple elements who are in us, that that are in the city of Newport Beach, that are within our service area, and are a couple of schools.
Well, the teachers are all back to work as of yesterday, teaching, I'll probably be getting more calls this week tomorrow.
I think it's Wednesday they come.
But then.
Well, then I remember, um here, I was one.
Kids go back from Monday, Monday. They might, well, I think the parking lot's because they're doing registration, so student registration, but I think Wednesday's the day of the teachers. I mean, they come back early, but they're supposed to be back.
Did you want, you want to this this morning?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh we have a motion to change us.
I'll move for a little change.
One second.
Discussion. All those in favor? I I I oppose, motion carries four to zero, one asks. Thank you, Seth, very much. Um oral communication, any comments?
Go ahead. Yeah, I just uh wanted to let everyone know, I've spoken with our general manager and our president, Shaffer, and word I know is travel faster than the community, but uh I had every intention of running for one more term up here uh in November to serve another four years, but due to a uh an opportunity to move uh not too far across the bay, but out of our area uh within the next year or two, just uh came to the family decision that I would not be seeking reelection to this seat uh in November and ultimately serve the next four years. It was top decisions, it's been a, I had every intention of serving another four, assuming the voters wanted me, but uh yeah, so I I just wanted to let everyone know, and uh I'm not saying goodbye or thank yous or anything like that, cause you guys got to put up with me for another few months, at least through December, and then uh then you guys can kick me out the door, but uh no, and uh I wish those who choose to uh run for this seat, if there's one or more, and uh best of luck to them, but yeah, it's been a, it's been a rough week or two, so uh so it makes me sad, but for a family couldn't pass up this move opportunity, and uh so, yeah, you guys got to deal with me for a few more months, but thank you for that time.
Moving to Corona line, so.
It's not a bad.
Well, yeah, you will have a chance later in the year in the comments, but thank you for uh, thank you for your service, obviously. Newport's K is our boss, we appreciate that.
Thank you for that. All right, any other convo?
Go ahead. We've had a lot of issues with fires in garbage trucks. CR and R reported that there's at least one a week in their X number of cities. And the battery recycling program is, you know, one potential way that we can positively increase the community and the fires in those, in the level of the fires in the trucks, if we can figure out how to get more active participation. And the one thing that we do is we do budget for a certain number of pails. And and I know they're a little bit expensive, but um I have, I have a panel in this facility a number of years ago, and you know, I use that panel to collect the batteries and give them to a certain number of schools. Um I would like to see some thought given to improving the number of pails that we make available to the public, either the pilot program or something. Um I I think we ought to pick up school um and make those pails available through that school potentially. To see if that makes a difference in um, to see if we can somehow make a difference in the amount of batteries to collect. It may not affect the particular batteries that cause those fires in in the trucks, but uh lithium batteries are lithium batteries. So I'd like staff to give some thought to increasing the pale availability and focus that the parents will use them, parents and kids will use them.
Yeah, I I I would hope that we could get more participation, uh a little wary about us getting involved with another collection program. I mean, what could happen with the flags, right? Uh so that kind of stuff. Um it it's too bad, you know, we we have to pay ten or fifteen cents, whatever it is, for a can of pop extra, right, you know, the recycling fee. It's too bad the state hasn't figured out a way to put some kind of incentive on bad battery recite. Uh and and the other thing is, I think when the different coast gets back open, um really emphasizing to them that having a battery collection is some sort of separate thing there. People are gonna go there anyway, right, if they see a battery collection thing. Maybe they'll just increase what you're talking to. Yeah, but it's just. Is it, is it the lithium batteries that causing the fires?
It's all the battery, all kinds of batteries, I don't know what.
Sure, I don't know what.
I think, I think the majority of the batteries go into.
The lithium.
Yeah, the majority of the batteries.
It's a lot of tests of trucks they could drive. Someone else?
Yeah, we could use a Cybertruck, maybe to.
Well, let's invite the police department and sell theirs batteries. Did you see David driving around, you know, that's over there, that would be, that'd be outstanding, a pink one. Have you seen the pink ones?
Yeah, I've seen all kinds, leopard. Colored and all kinds.
All right, any other suggestions? Thank you all very much, but that, we have no study session in the month of September due to annual conference with CSDA, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.
You know.